Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, November 27, 2023. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First selectman's report. A few items for you. First of all, we had a, there was a Darien Chamber of Commerce awards reception at Nielsen's last week, and it was pretty well attended. They had a chance to celebrate the awards for top employees at several local businesses, and I got to meet all the folks who were honored that evening, and it was terrific to be there. So, thank you to both the Chamber and to Nielsen's for quite the nice event. We also had the Senior Center Thanksgiving luncheon, and it was terrific because, obviously over at the Senior Center, but they'd arranged for the lunch, and the chef was out sick and couldn't do this. And so, we got all of the, they were able to get the lunch reorganized and have it catered by Michael Josephs. I think it was within hours of it being the time to get this done. And so, the whole team there got this whole thing done, and lunch was ready to serve at noon. And so, there were lots of people who were serving, and we all had lunch that was there as well. And I just want to say thank you to Michael Josephs and everybody who put all this together. It was amazing. So, a lot of fun. We'll definitely do that again. I've been to a couple of Eagle Scout ceremonies on November 18. I had a chance to see Maddie Dickinson and be there when she was, went through the ceremony for her Eagle Scout. And just this past weekend, Charlie Salamore, Casey Malloy, and Trey Davenport, they all earned the rank of Eagle Scout. And I have to say, it's really terrific to go to those events because you get a chance to meet not just the scouts, but the whole community that kind of came together to make that happen. It was their parents, it was their fellow scouts, it was the scout masters, it was a whole ton of people had put in a lot of effort over a long period of time to get those boys and now young men to the point that they could earn that award, and young woman, obviously with Maddie. But congrats to all four of them and for their families and scouts. That was fantastic. We had the Turkey Bowl. The Turkey Bowl did not go as I think we had all unanimously planned, but it was a tremendous effort certainly by our Men in Blue and the Darien Way football team. It was a lot of fun to be there despite the lopsided score.
But?
But? Go ahead.
You won the toss.
Now, so I, we did win the toss. It was the only thing we won that day. Flipped that bad boy, came up tails, and we got that. But I shall be sending in my $100 contribution to the New Canaan Athletic Foundation forth with and delivering evidence of that contribution to my good friend and colleague, Deanna Carlson, who's the new first selectman of New Canaan. And I will tell her to have her checkbook at the ready for next year when she will be writing that same check to the Darien Athletic Foundation. So, but anyway, thanks to everybody who was involved in that. If you've not been to these games before, it's a lot of fun to go out and cheer the team on, and while they're playing, you get to visit with a ton of people and catch up with a lot of folks, and it's just a very, very fun day. So, plus, the weather was perfect that day. I mean, it was really just, it was awesome, except for the score. It was great. This past weekend, there was a celebration of life for Penny Glassmire, who, as many of you know, was a real estate developer and really just an amazing firm citizen, or firm citizen, citizen for the town of Darien, respected by a great many people. She led the development of a lot of properties that you see in Darien and was truly a visionary. I was there, I know Monica was there, I don't know who else was able to go, but what I didn't know were some of the stories about her and how, the kind of life that she led, where she got her ideas and inspiration. And one of the great things was that she had several friends, and what they would do is wear these red scarves and go on trips to New York City, and they played bridge together and all. And all of her friends were all lined up at this service, all wearing these red scarves. And to hear the stories told about her really just brought a richness to the kind of person that she was, and it was just a real privilege to go there. They held it in the high school auditorium simply because of the sheer number of people who turned out for that, but it's a testament to her, that her husband had Glassmire and the rest of the family about just what a great person she was and what a privilege it was to have her as a citizen of this town. So, our town's condolences to the family and friends for Penny, and thank you for having that service. This past Sunday, yesterday, we had the tree lighting ceremony at the Darien Sports Shop. Mike and Sarah and I were there. You came, didn't you, or did Rick? No, I couldn't remember whether you'd been there. That was terrific because it was threatening to rain right up until the very end. I think we had some drizzle, but all in all, it was a great event, and Santa Claus showed up, fire truck and costume and all of that. So, if you missed it this year, definitely go next year. It was a lot of fun and highly recommended. And then, finally, we have some additional news on Great Island and finalizing the purchase of a traffic circle. I spoke at some length about this at the Rules Committee for the RTM last week, so I won't repeat that update here, but you can go back and watch that video for an explanation of all of that, and Monica may have further comments about that later in the meeting. That's all for me for the first selectman update. Next up is Town Administrator Kate.
Just wanted to remind people, the deadline for merchant parking permit renewals is November 30, which is this Thursday. The deadline for the commuter parking permits renewals is December 15. Don't lose your permit, make sure you renew. For board members, if there are any projects that you would like to see included in the fiscal '25 capital budget request, please reach out to me and let me know, so I can help work on that. That's it.
Okay, terrific. Board Liaison Reports. Mr. Burke.
The Blight Review Board will meet next on December 13, and I'll have a report after that time.
13, okay. Marcy?
No updates since our last meeting.
Okay. Terrific. All right.
Great Island, we will be meeting, the Great Island Advisory Committee will be meeting on Wednesday at 6:30 in this room, and the focus of that meeting will be to look at the drawings and plans for expanding the 23A, the road that goes into Great Island. So, that will be the focus of that meeting. And as John said, he did cover the acquisition of the traffic circle on the island, and I advise if anyone's interested in that to tune into the Rules Meeting. He did, he did a really thorough job there, so.
Well, we've studied it so long, it's all kind of memorized, so it's really easy to give it.
Or you can just ask me anything.
Right. Sarah?
For the Thriving Youth Task Force, the last meeting was on November 16. On the Darien Library, forgive me, it's not Thriving Youth Task Force anymore, it's Thriving Youth Darien. So, the last Thriving Youth Darien meeting was on November 16. The new Thriving Youth Program Director, Sarah McCarty, was introduced, and she reviewed the goals for the year and highlighted items from the last meeting. So, just a presentation of the survey results for the community. The goal going forward will be to focus on addressing the survey results and with programming and environmental strategies. The students will be the next set of community members that the data will be presented to, and they're working out the best way to do that. The new Team Talk Counselor, Ashley Lopez, at Darien High School was introduced. She is someone who comes from, gosh, I am blanking, Kids in Crisis, thank you, sorry. And she talked about her work so far this year. The counselor currently has a caseload of about 26 students, and right now they're reporting a lot of eating issues with relationship and self-esteem issues. Ashley's role is additional support for the guidance counselors, whose main focus is on academics, and she meets weekly with her students. The next Thriving Youth Darien meeting is in January on the 18th on Zoom. And for the Henley Homes and Royal Task Force, not Task Force, Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee, forgive me, I apologize, was on November 15, and we discussed the bids that were received by November 8. In the big picture overall, the rebidding process had greater bid participation, which did overall reduce some numbers. Percentages varied from some rebids to be up and down in costs. Specifically, there's more favorable bid turnout due to the increased participation, which did increase some competitiveness. Some bid savings unfortunately were diminished due to delayed project timing for a year out. And some trades have withdrawn glaringly low bids that they didn't realize were low. Yeah. So, we did not unfortunately see the amount of savings that they were hoping. We're going to continue the process, we're going to be waiting to hear from ONG, they're going to be presenting to us on December 6, the recommendations going forward and for all the bids, and then we're going to be voting on it by the 13th in advance of coming back to this committee, this board. I am really struggling apparently with any of these boards and commissions, forgive me. And we're going to be meeting by the 13th, we can vote and hopefully come before this. Board on the 18th, and the Board of Finance on the 19th. And, yeah, so we'll see what happens, but we are anticipating an increased bid appropriation request.
So, is, are you trying to work the dates for the state?
Right. Yeah. So, did? Well, it's also, we have to get the approvals done because the bids expire in February. There are three months.
So, what happened? Some low bidders?
Some bids, the individuals or the companies could bid either one school or all three schools. And some of the individual bids were lower, and apparently they were very low, and they were hopeful to get, you know, either one or all three, but when they added, the company went back and added up the numbers, sometimes the overall was much lower.
Was that one company?
No, actually, it was two. And it's unfortunate because we do give the lowest bidder. So, two of them were very strong, so it is unfortunate. So, we're waiting from ONG to get back to us with the recommendation, so, yeah. This is not the smooth process that it was for Oxford. It's unfortunate.
Sorry.
Thank you. I'll throw in one comment myself that I should have included in the first selectman's report. So, we've received a number of comments from folks about property valuations, and so the letters have come out saying this is how much your property value changed as a result of the revaluation process led by Tony Homicki, our tax assessor, and his team, as well as some third parties. And some of those valuation changes were pretty large, 20%, 30%, 40%, really big numbers. And some folks have called wondering whether their taxes are going to go up by those kinds of amounts. And so, that's not true, and it has to do with the fact that the relevant figure is not so much how much your property value went up, but how much your property value went up relative to the overall grand list. And so, what I did today, actually, I just finished shooting a short video with some slides that Kate helped me with, that explained why this is true. And so, as soon as I figure out the technology to get that over, we're going to post that on the town website, and we'll get out a link to our email distribution list as well as to a variety of other sites. The short answer, though, is that if you take the amount that your property increased in value and you compare it to the grand list, overall grand list increase in value, which was 29%, what you want to think about is how close did my property value increase get to that 29% number? So, if your property also went up exactly 29%, you know, you're good. You're in the same tax situation you were before, and if the budget next, for the next fiscal year goes up 5%, your taxes kind of go up 5%. Again, it's a little more complicated than that. But if your property went up more than 29%, that means that your property has a higher share of the total value of the grand list and therefore a higher responsibility, if you will, for taxes than it might have otherwise had. In any case, I won't go into a lot of detail, but do take a look at that short video I prepared, and hopefully that'll be clear. And if you've got questions, you can, of course, send them to me or to the Tax Assessor's Office. We want everybody to understand this process and the resulting valuations and math and how that works. There's no reason for anybody to be confused about that, but we will try to be as transparent and as clear about that as possible, so.
Hey, John, was commercial the same as residential?
No.
Do we, do we know what commercial was?
It went up, but it did not, it did not, the residential increase was more than the commercial.
Okay. So, the average between the two is 29?
The total is 29.
The total grand list, so 29%.
Okay. Yeah. And just, you know, one thing, that's the property. Don't forget, there's also personal property and motor vehicles. So, with an increase like that, the milery is likely to drop. So, car taxes will drop.
Yeah, so it's all good. And then, and I don't go into the complexities like that in this video, I'm just trying to answer that single question, which is what can I expect with my taxes given the big property value increase that I see? So, more to come on that. I may have another discussion about it after I kind of test public interest. If they never want to hear from me again, that could be the last video, but we'll save. But again, I want to make sure that this is clear, concise, and transparent, and we'll try to do more of these going forward. Okay. Kate, any public comments?
I did not receive any. Now, if you have any new audience.
Comments from the public? Okay. New business. We need to appoint an acting first selectman, and we've had this in the past, and this is in the event that the first selectman, in this case, me, if I'm out of town for any extended period of time, just to make sure that there's someone in town who can be responsible in the event there's a need or an emergency or some other issue, we want to make sure that someone's in place to do that in the, in the event that role is needed. I served that in the last administration, and I need a nomination to do that in this administration. Marcy?
I'd like to nominate Monica Pannelli. I think she's got the experience to do that.
I think she does, and we have talked about it, so hopefully you remain okay with that, with that duty. So, thank you. Could I get a second? Mr. Burke, all in favor? Okay. Monica, thank you for agreeing to do that. I really appreciate it. Thank you. So, okay. Transfers. Discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $337,000 for the Darien Police Department female locker room expansion. Kate, Chief Anderson?
I'd turn it over to the, I think, Captain Hadema.
Captain Hadema.
You're trying to lock the bus.
Captain, thank you for coming.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. Allison Hadema, Administrative Services Bureau Captain with the Police Department. We're here requesting a transfer to renovate our women's locker room. Currently, we have 10 lockers for our females, and we are at 11 females right now. So, we are down one locker currently. I have Mark Allen here with me and Tony Campanella, who are helping me with the project. So, we are interested in going ahead. We've already put out for bid, and we've gotten those responses. We've worked with the lowest bidder to try to get the best bang for our buck, which I think we are, we're at that point now. So, now we're ready to move ahead and hopefully get the funds that we need to move along with our renovation.
That's for viewers and just to make sure all the history's there. Would you give us 30, 60 seconds, just sort of where, what led to this point and what capacity you're adding and kind of all that, so we have a better vision of the project?
Sure. So, our building was renovated in 2010. We have 50 male lockers, 10 female lockers. At the time, we only had about five females, and they thought 10 would be sufficient, but now we're in 2023, and we are at capacity for our female locker room. We're also looking to add an additional shower. If we're, we are looking to add seven more lockers, so if by chance we get to 17, one shower isn't going to be enough for all of us, even at this point, for 11 females, one shower. We all know how females like to use the restroom. So, right now, one is a little tight in the morning when we're all trying to get ready, so we're looking to add a shower to the locker room as well.
How many lockers will you have when you finish, and where did you get the capacity, the physical capacity to add to that?
So, we're looking to add seven more, and we're bumping out the current locker room into our gymnasium space. So, we're going to cut down on that a bit, open it up on the other side where we have some free space in the men's locker room, kind of hopefully get back what we've taken for the women's locker room, for our gym, because our employees do like to work out there when they can. So, we're trying to use the space that we have. It's a limited space, it's small, so we're just trying to make the most of what we can get out of that area without going into a huge renovation.
Yeah. Mark Allen from Chukuski Humes Architects, we were the architects for the original renovation of the building back in 2010, and we came back and we've rented, came up with a plan that's not going to make a big, huge impact in that area, but we just sort of moved a few small pieces around that we think is a very efficient plan. And we're trying to respond to the, to the, there's an effort, your 30 by 30 initiative is to increase the amount of female officers to 30% by 2030. So, I think, you know, in our experience, we, we do quite a few police stations across Connecticut, Massachusetts, and, and I think, you know, to Darien's credit, they're doing a great job of attracting, you know, female officers at a rate that, that even we didn't think that, that, you know, would occur. So, we, we came up with a fairly compact solution. We think it's, we think it's nice and efficient. We think we're at $306,000 with the contractor to affect all those changes, which include moving walls around and all the mechanicals that are involved with that, new lights, the new shower, bring arrangement of some spaces. So, I think we're, we're really in a, really in a good spot, and I think, you know, I was really pleased to see the bids come in. We got three, three bids from three very, very good contractors, and so I'm really pleased with the way that this project has folded out. We made a presentation last Tuesday to the Board of Finance, and it's pretty much the same, same presentation, and they, they were unanimous in their vote to move this forward. And we're, we've got the contractor ready to go. He's very interested, he keeps calling me, asking when we could go. And so, we're here just, just to present to you, and hopefully we can, we can get started shortly.
So, we, oh.
I know in the, in the past, when there's been renovations in that building, it seems to create a situation where all of a sudden there's a discovery of other problems because it's old building, new building. Are you fairly confident in this project that you're not going to see some of the added expenses later?
Yes.
Or so that, just so that they would be accounted for if there are these unanticipated problems, which seem to be a little bit commonplace when we do work in that building?
Yes. The existing building is not where we're doing the renovation. We are doing the renovation in the part of the building that was added in 2010. So, certainly there's no hazardous materials. We have a pretty good idea of what's there, and we have the same design team working on it. So, it's, you know, we feel very confident we're not going to run into any situations that are going to be a surprise.
Thank you.
Two questions. How long is this project, do you think, it's going to take? And what is the plan? Well, it's under construction for all of the women who will not have.
That's a very good question. Well, we, when we were looking at the project and we put it out to bid, we had in that bid, we had a, you know, pretty substantial temporary locker room built in one of the garages. And after we sat down and did a bid review with the apparent low bidder and made sure he had all these pieces in there, he made some suggestions about how we might reduce the price of that bid, how we might save some money. And it really had to do with the temporary locker room. So, we came up with a different strategy on the temporary locker room, and it's, it's a lot simpler, a lot less expensive than what the original plan was. It's essentially to assemble new lockers in the old sailing port in the building, and there's plenty of room for, for 11 lockers in there. You know, I wish it could be a little bit better planned. We are, we are temporarily fitting out one of the, one of the restrooms so that the females can have a shower during this period. We anticipate the schedule of the project. We're going to, I think we're allowing four months. I believe it's going to be quite a bit less than that, could be substantially less than that. So, you know, as long as we can prevail on the female officers to kind of put up with this temporary situation for, for a short period of time, I think we're going to give them the locker room that they need.
And that cost to assemble it is all in this cost?
Correct.
The temporary locker, okay.
Yes.
Yes, so we've already purchased the lockers that was in our first request, so they are ready to go, built, ready to ship when we need them. The temporary lockers are onsite, and DPW is going to put them together when we, and if we get the go-ahead. I worked with the females for the temporary locker room because I wanted to make sure everyone was going to be happy and no one's going to be upset about where our showers are and our lockers, and so everyone seemed to agree on this, you know, temporary solution. So, it seems that it's going to work out.
So, when the building was done in 2010, and they only put in these 10 lockers, they clearly underestimated the number of female officers that we would have, and now you're kind of talking about 30%. It strikes me that there's a high likelihood 10 years from now that 30% was not enough, so 40, 50, 60%. I mean, it could grow to where you would have large numbers, a lot more women than what you're forecasting.
Yes.
And so, was there any way to think about this where you could say, on a per-unit basis, make a much bigger investment to get a lot more lockers than what you're, what you're envisioning here, simply because you, you may blow through that cap and we have a lot more female officers in the future?
Yes.
Well, it's sort of a balance between, you know, money, because that's what it's going to take, and because to really substantially expand this area, we're going to need to really take over the entire fitness room, and we need to find another spot for that. And in the building currently, we're not sure we have enough space, we might need to put an addition on. So, that's really where the cost comes in. It's going to be a substantial cost extra, and we feel that this is going to get us probably at least 15 years down the road with this solution.
Are the men's and women's lockers next to each other? So, in other words, is it physically possible to say if you add this capacity here and then in the future, if that balance continues to, if the staff continues to migrate towards women, that you could move a wall and take a series of male lockers and repurpose them to female lockers?
The problem with the men's locker rooms is the point where they really touch, that the areas would touch, is the restroom area. So, and that's the most kind of expensive area to redo. So, really, for the women to expand, we would need to take over that, that, that fitness room.
How many lockers did you say is in the men's locker room?
50.
Oh, which means I can get a lot.
Definitely would not be enough.
Another couple of years, though, Flip, I'm sure.
I think 17 is a good amount for now. I think even if we get to the 30%, which would be about 16 women, there is like a turn, you know, so I'm getting to the age where I may be leaving soon, there's two or three other women.
We don't hear that.
30 or 35 years from now?
Yeah. So kind. But yeah, there's some women that are, you know, coming to the point of retirement that, you know, will leave, and then some people will take it. So, I don't see us hitting that, you know, 16, 17 number till, like Mark said, maybe 10 or 15 years. And at that point, if we do need to expand, like he said, we can expand into the gym, and then we can move the gym into the basement if we, you know, into the, the ground floor if we have to, and take one of the areas that we were going to put where the temporary locker room was originally going to be put. So, I mean, there are options we can do in the future if we have to, but I think adding the seven would be enough for a while.
Okay. Other questions? Sarah?
So, I support this project entirely. I have no issues at all. I'm 100% for this. My questions are regarding the funding mechanism and why we're choosing ARPA funds to fund it that way.
Well, the advantage of the ARPA funds here is that they're available immediately. These are, actually, I think we would have to have an ARPA meeting to repurpose all that, but they're appropriated funds, right?
Yes.
Right, so they could be spent now, and this project can get underway. Right. So they could be spent now, and this project can get underway immediately as soon as we approve it.
So the ARPA committee would need to. We got it?
No, this, it's coming from the ARPA contingency, so it doesn't need to go back to the ARPA committee.
Yeah, the only time we had to meet for ARPA was when we were repurposing those foreign investments.
Right, yeah.
But because of this, we don't, there's no further approval needed after this discussion.
And I think we're struggling with some of our appropriations in ARPA that we don't expect we'll be able to obligate them by December of next year, which, and obligating means contracts signed, et cetera. And we'd have to do that by the end of next year. And some of the funds, we think already, we, we need to look at repurposing them. So we are looking for projects that are needed, ready to go, to be able to use that ARPA money.
All right, yeah. Maybe not a fan of the ARPA funds, but I am 100% for this project. So this is what needs to get done. This is what needs to get done.
Ellie, how many showers are in, for the men? You have 50 lockers?
Three showers.
Three showers. So you'll have two for the women.
Right.
And what's DPW's role in all this?
Do you want to talk to that?
Since, since Ellie doesn't have, Tony Campagnella, Public Works, since Ellie doesn't have a construction background, I've been working with her and, and just helped guiding her through, along with Mark, some of the construction components. So, you know, we're there to support. We're not going to be doing any of the work physically, other, you know, a little work on temporary locker rooms. The access control, which is a 2500 NRASK, is a proprietary contractor that works with DPW and police for access control, camera work. So that, that's our role.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Can I ask one?
Okay.
Ellie, will the women's locker room, like the amenities facilities, be equal to the men's?
Yes, we will have the same, we have the same lockers, same shower facilities. Everything will be the same.
Good.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm also supportive of this. It's both necessary for our department and reflective of societal trends that we're going to see equality in all these kinds of roles. So we should plan for this kind of capacity, not just in the police station, but every other kind of future renovation that we might think of doing where, where there are separate gender facilities. We ought to just be mindful of all that. And even for police station designs in the future, you ought to set up your lockers where you can move walls in the future as, as gender mix evolves and do that inexpensively. But anyway, I'm not telling you what to do, but sort of, I'm telling you what to do. Anyway. Okay. If there are no other questions, got to get a motion to approve these transfers to fund this locker renovation and change. Marcy moves? Monica second, all in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
We want a tour when it's done.
Pretty sure we'll get a tour, absolutely. Okay, that's it on transfers. We have a couple sets of minutes to approve. The first one is for our November 13th regular meeting, and that's here in our package. And then for the November 20th special meeting. November 13th, any changes or updates to this? Okay, got to get a motion to approve within minutes from that? Mike's, Sarah's second, all in favor? Okay. Similarly, for the special meeting, which was really just to have executive session, but that's for the special meeting of November 20th. Can I get a motion to approve? Sarah moves. Mike's second, all in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Agenda review. Anyone have anything for future agendas? No? Okay. Just our next upcoming meeting, just to, for the public knows, we had a meeting scheduled for December 4th. We had to move that meeting because I'm actually out of the country that day. But we've moved it to be a special meeting. It'll take place right before the RTM meeting and the state of the town, state of the town addresses on December 11th. Those start at 8 o'clock, and the Board of Selectmen will meet at 7 o'clock right before the RTM meeting. So just to be aware of that. If there's no further business, can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay. Marcy, Mike's second, all in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.